I think people are just arriving now, so we'll just wait till we've almost got a full house before we start, if that's okay. So if it's a bit quiet, you're all in, if you can see everybody else you're in and you're safe and sound. We'll just wait for everybody else to arrive. If you're just arriving, can you put yourself on mute please till we start properly? Thank you. Hope it's in the way too. Okay. So yeah. Okay. We'll start. Okay, so good evening, everybody. And my name is Mary Lee, I'm a councillor for Donald Ward and I chair the Slack area committee. And I'd like just to welcome you to this online consultation meeting tonight. It's very good that everybody's arrived. There may be one or two people who are a bit late, so just bear with that if you would. This evening, this event is being held to report back on the details of the public consultation, the local area, the local area community plan for the Slack area and to give you the public an opportunity to consider these initial findings, test their validity and identify any gaps. The event is being held online because of the current ongoing situation with COVID, although we all know that's moved on a bit now. But it was there, we had to put these arrangements in place to protect the public, members of staff and members of the council. Before we start, there are just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention for this online event. And I'll hand over to my colleague from Democratic Services, Jay, to set out these details. Okay, Jay?
The event is being conducted in Zoom as a virtual platform and will be live streamed to the public via the council's public webcast. This will mean that the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council website. You should be aware that the authority is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during the webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's data retention policy. Therefore, by entering the virtual meeting room, you are consenting to being filmed and for the use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. If members of the public not wish to have their image captured, they should turn their camera off. Alternatively, they can leave the virtual meeting room and watch the live webcast council meeting webpages. We have a high number of attendees, so to help make the meeting run as smoothly as possible, it is important that all participants in the virtual meeting room have their microphone on mute for the duration of the meeting. At the appropriate part of the meeting, you will be able to indicate the wish to speak by using the raised hand function. The chair will let you know when this is. Please only unmute when the chair invites you to speak. This will help reduce the scope for noise interference. To assist with the smooth flow of the meeting, the chat so that it is not available. May I also suggest that all mobile phones and similar devices are switched to silent in order to ensure the disturbance when speaking at the meeting. Also, please ensure that you have an appropriate background. Thank you in advance for this. One final thing to mention, a live transcript of the meeting is available by clicking on the live captioning button on your tool. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you. We have a running order for the meeting, but before we proceed with this, I would like to explain how our meeting will work. Are we going to put the agenda on the screen? It says here, no? Okay, thank you. I will shortly ask the councillors for the Slack area to introduce themselves and our lack offices also to introduce themselves. And we will then have a presentation from the area manager to report back on the initial findings of the public consultation on the lack community plan. After this, we'll break into groups to discuss the different themes that have arisen. And I will explain how these breakout groups will work when we get to that item. After the breakout room discussions, we will receive an overview of the main discussion points from each group. We will collect all the details after the meeting to inform the final version of the plan. There will be then an opportunity for public questions and I'll explain how that will work when we get to that item. Once the public questions are finished, I'll sum up and outline the next steps that will be following from the meeting tonight. So introductions, can I start off with the people I see on my screen first? So I've got Anne Murphy.
Good evening, everybody. I'm councillor for the Manor and Castle Ward and I'm a chair of the Slack.
Shonad?
Hi, I'm Shonad. I'm also Manor and Castle Ward councillor.
Terry?
Hi, good evening. My name's Terry Fox. I'm councillor for Manor Castle Ward and also leader at council.
David?
Good evening. I'm David Barker, local councillor for Richmond Ward.
Diane?
Hello, everybody. My name's Diane Hurst and I'm also a councillor in Richmond Ward.
Sahira?
Hi councillor Sahira Nas, councillor for the Donald Ward.
I've got Ben Miskel somewhere. I can't see him on this screen at the moment, but Ben's here.
Hello, hi all. My name's Ben Miskel. I'm one of the councillors in Park and Alberthorn Ward. It's great to see people today.
Okay, thanks a lot. So now our officers, Abby?
Hi, I'm Abby Wilson. I'm the Community Services Officer in the East and I cover Donald and Richmond Wards.
Huda?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Huda Ahmed. I'm the Local Area Committee Manager for the East Local Area Committee.
Okay, James?
Evening, everyone. I'm James Debell, Project Support Officer for the East Local Area Committee team.
Okay, and lastly, Ella?
Hi, everyone. I'm Ella Moncom. I'm the Community Services Officer for the East along with Abby. And I cover Park and Alberthorn and Manor Castle Wards.
Okay, and there are other officers of the council here today there to help in the breakout rooms and to take notes and do the scribing. So that's the rundown for today. That's how we're going to proceed. So I'm now just going to hand over to Huda, who will give you a presentation on the findings of the consultation we did on to prepare for this community plan for this area. Huda?
Right, can everybody see that? Can you hear, all hear me as well?
Yes, yes.
Brilliant, great stuff. Thank you. Right, so I thought, my first slide, I thought, I'll say hello and welcome. And this is a slide where we've got hello and welcome to all the different community languages that are spoken in the city today. And I'll start off by saying Assalamualaikum, which is my community language, which is Arabic. And actually, it translates to peace be with you. So my presentation today covers four sections. The first section, I'll be talking briefly about the local area committee. Section two, I'll be talking about the East area. Section three, I'll be talking about the findings from our consultation that we did last year. And then section four, I'll be talking about the priorities that we've identified from our consultation and from what you already know. And then, and then kind of next steps as well. So section one, what are local area committees or LACs in short? Local area committees, you might already know this, are a way for people to get involved in making a difference to their local communities. Some budgets have already been developed to local area committees and it's basically for them to be used on issues and priorities that residents and communities have told us are important to them. So LACs are there, there are chants for people to influence decision making, they're there for them to share their opinions, to contribute positively to changes in their community. And they're also an opportunity for people to say what they would like to see in terms of improvement for their area. There's a website on Sheffield City Council, sheffield.gov, if you want to know more about local area committees. It's not moving. It's stuck. How come it's stuck? Right, so in terms of, sorry about the technical difficulty there, in terms of the East LAC, East is one of seven local area committees. And our East LAC consists of four wards, which are Park and Alberthorn, Donald, Manor Castle and Richmond Wards. As it happens, the council has actually produced a really good video about local area committees. And there's one specifically for in British Sign Language interpretation. So we can send you this to those people that have signed up for the meeting. In terms of who are members of this committee, you've met most of them already. They are the 12 elected members of the four wards. Obviously, they've elected councillor Mary Lee as the chair of the LAC. And then we've got the vice chair Anne Murphy. The LAC is supported by a small team of officers, which consists of me, my two community service officers, which is Ella and Abby, and then the project support officer, James. Again, the councils have already introduced themselves, but just to just go through the names again. For Park and Alberthorn Ward, we've got councillor Ben Miskel, councillor Sophie Wilson and councillor Jack Scott. For the Manor and Castle Ward, we've got councillor Anne Murphy, councillor Terry Fox and councillor Shonad Mayer Richards. For the Donald Ward, it's councillor Mary Lee, councillor Sahira Nas and councillor Mazurig Bao. And then for the Richmond Ward, it's councillor Diane Hurst and councillor Mike Drabble and councillor David Barker. So the next section is about the East area. What I'm going to do in this section is talk about what we already know about our area. Some headlines here, and this is information that we have from the census and from data that we already collect. We know that the four wards have a total population of 85,000 people. And out of that, we know almost 53,000 people are living in deprivation. And that's when we talk about deprivation, we talk about high unemployment, poor health, probably poor housing. Some headline, other headline statistics, we know in our area, 23% are from a black or Asian or ethnic minority community. And that 63% are of working age and that the average household income is just below £34,000 a year. And we know that 22% have said they've got a limiting long-term illness. So this is what we already know. So when we had our meeting in September last year, our first public meeting as a local area committee for the East, we decided that we wanted to hold a consultation session, which allows people to have a say about what they wanted LACs to focus on, to tell us a bit more about any ideas, any issues they wanted us to kind of focus on. So what we did there was we conducted a survey and there were two surveys that we did that was promoted on social media, on the website, we had a press release. And there was a survey, online survey, and we had about 328 responses on the online survey. But we also did a paper survey and we had just over 1,000 responses. And in total, we had 1,337 responses. And I know people will look at this and say, actually, that's not huge. And it's just to say, actually, that indicates to us that we need to do a bit more work in terms of capturing the views and engagement with our diverse and residents and communities. In terms of what was said in that community consultation, this is just an explanation of the people that responded to the questionnaire. We know that almost 60% of respondents were female. We know that 10% of the respondents were from a black or Asian community. We know that over 71% responded were between the age of 19 and 64. So just kind of give you an idea of the people, of the kind of demographics of the people that responded to our survey. In terms of what they said, there was a question in the survey where we asked people to tell us what they liked about their neighbourhoods, what they liked about where they live. And as you can see from the slide, people said they liked their neighbourhood, they liked the fact they had access to parks and green spaces. They liked local amenities and shops, they liked transport, they were proud of their schools and youth clubs and they liked the fact they had access to football pitches. In terms of improvements, people were telling us that there was some need of improvement in terms of the local area improving businesses, local housing. They needed more activities and facilities, not just for children, young people, for adults as well. There was general things mentioned to us around just the general appearance of estates and neighbourhoods, the issues around reducing crime, antisocial behaviour, things like fly tipping and litter. They wanted more activities for around health and wellbeing. So those are kind of the general idea that people were telling us. One of the questions we asked also in the survey is, how happy are you with your local area where you live? And as you can see, what nearly 36% were really happy or very happy or very happy about where they live. And the next slide, we asked, how easy is it to find out about news in your local area? And as you can see from the slide, something like 39% said it was very hard or really hard to find information about our local area. We suggest actually there is some work for us to do in terms of communicating and sharing information and so on. The other slide is just a graph about the themes that came out clearly. People said they liked where they live, they liked, like I said earlier, the open spaces, the businesses and transport and so on. These are the kind of things that people liked. At the same time, these are the sort of improvements that they want to see. So in general, this general feedback that people generally felt they like their areas, they like their neighbourhoods. But actually, there's lots of work to be done in terms of improvements, whether it's about the environment, whether it's about transport and highways, community and crime, activities for children, young people, issues around businesses. So there's lots of work for us to do. In terms of the community priorities moving on on section four, so we've identified from the consultation that we've done and from what we already know about the area, that there are six themes and I've classed them priorities or themes, because obviously environment can be a number of things. So the six priorities that we've identified is, like I said, is the environment, community safety and crime, communities and neighbourhoods, children, young people, transport and highways and health and wellbeing. And obviously, people will look at this slide and people that have lived and worked in the areas will say, actually, these are not new priorities. We've been talking about these for quite a long time, which is, you know, true and fair enough. Just to give you kind of further details about each one, so for example, environment, the issues, one or two issues from here were clearly about fly tipping and waste, issues around parks, feeling safe and more facilities. Again, with the crime and community safety, people were saying we wanted more police presence. We want to deal with antisocial behaviour. Can we have more CCTVs? There's concerns about shootings that they hear about, knife crime, drug dealing. Again, with transport and highways, things that came out was around, you know, traffic calming measures to stop speeding. There are issues around pedestrians feeling safe and school parking, whether we need cycling lanes in place. And then for the community and neighbourhoods, we've already talked about that earlier on. But again, it's about how do we create opportunities for residents and businesses to access employment and digital inclusion? How do we use positively the community assets that we have, the community buildings, so they're open for everyone to use? And also, there was an issue about how do we positively celebrate and focus on what brings people together? Again, with health and wellbeing, it was never a specific question that we asked in the questionnaire, but we already know from the data that we have, this massive persistent health inequalities in relation to health. People said they found it really difficult to access services in relation to health. And obviously, the impact of COVID on communities and people and particularly around mental health. In terms of children and young people, it was about youth provision. We wanted to invest in youth provision to divert young people away from crime and antisocial behaviour. We wanted more access to relevant services that support children and families and young people. And then create opportunities for young people to access training and employment. And then finally, for me, I've put ways of working. For us to be effective in terms of dealing with all those priorities, what we need to kind of think about as a local area committee is what I've said, as kind of partnership working. When we talk about partnership working, it's about making sure that we work with service providers, the voluntary community and faith groups to make sure that we work together, that we're not working in isolation. That's the only way we can have maximum impact. People have said, well, actually, these are not new to us. Well, what is it we need to do? What else can we do? We need to have like a creative approach. How do we realistically and positively and practically address some of these local concerns and priorities? And then a thread that goes through all our work and everything that we do is an inclusive ethos. It's about making sure that we value equality and diversity. There is a willingness to deal realistically and honestly with the issues that affect all communities. And that we develop specific projects and actions and that we make sure that we link into the wider city strategies, like the economic strategy, like the poverty strategy or the strategy around digital inclusion, that we're not working in isolation and that we're actually identifying tangible measures that we can take forward as a LAC and as residents and communities. So the next steps for us is like Mary said, we've got today's, our presenting you our draft priorities and what we found from the consultation. The next step is in the next public meeting we have on the 23rd of March, which is going to be held at Park Academy from six till eight. And hopefully, what we'll do there is present you the plan and the action plan behind it. And then between March and June, we're going to think about the projects and how we're going to work out the budget. Just finally, you're going to break out into workshops, which Mary's going to explain in a bit more detail. But for me, it's about having a conversation about how we can work together to respond to the identified priorities. You know, we talked about environment, what is working well there, community safety and communities and neighbourhoods, children, people, health and wellbeing, transport and how is, what's working well? What's already happening in our communities? What's our strengths? What's our assets? How do we build more community connection? How do we reach the wider residents? How do we work in partnership? Who are our partners when we deliver these priorities? And then for me, it's about identifying some key issues and some key ideas. Finally, this is our contact details. If you want to contact us or contact any of my team. And that's about it. And just thank you so much for listening to me today and thank you so much for joining us this evening. That's about it really. Thank you. Stop sharing.
Thanks for that. That was really good and a good presentation. Thank you very much. So we're now going to get my script back. We're going to shortly go into our breakout rooms. However, we have less numbers of people here than we thought we might do. I think there was well about 100 people booked in and we've got 60 people here tonight. So we're going to amalgamate some of the workshops, because I know in one of the workshops, there was only two people and you'd be dominated by a number of officers and councillors. And I don't think that would have been the best thing to do. So we are going to amalgam, I'll just tell you what we're going to do. Crime and neighbourhoods are going to go together, children and health are going to go together and transport and environment will go together as well. So the two councillors that will be facilitating each of those workshops will now work together in those breakout rooms and cover both those topics. I think that's, and we try to put people into the workshop that they had had the preference for. So what we want to do is, the main purpose of these sessions is to allow us to consult with you as members of the public to relay some of our initial findings and test out their validity and identify any gaps that there might be. So we're keen to hear from as many people as possible here tonight within the group. I would ask that let people, if you're in whatever group you're in, let everybody have their say. I know some people feel very, very strongly about various issues. But please, once you've had your say, please let other people have the say as well and keep yourself on mute when you're not speaking. And we'd like you to consider the presentation highlighted, which highlighted the main issues that have been identified through the consultation. Are these correct? Are these the right issues? We'd like you to agree on what the priorities would be based on our discussion tonight and what you would like to see. What were the outcomes you would like to see in terms of the community plan going forward? And suggest ways, suggest ways in which we can address these issues. And also lastly, how you'd like to be involved as our partners and residents of this lack area. We're going to run this session for about an hour. So please, when you're in your breakout rooms, please stay and, you know, give us your thoughts and ideas and listen to what other people have got to say. And then when the hour is up, we'll bring you back into the main meeting and we'll get some feedback on each of the themes from each of the workshops and each of the breakout rooms. So I really would say this might take a few minutes to get organised, so please bear with us. And I really thank you for your patience in advance. Okay, so we're going to do that now. So a few minutes.
Huda, I wasn't down to do environment. Can I ask why I'm being allocated there?
Shanesh Sahi is doing the environment.
Yeah, that's what's coming up for mine and I'm supposed to be in police. I'm getting the little note that says I'm being invited to join environment and I'm meant to be the other one.
Just bear with us, Shanela. Alex, which, oh, crime.
Hello, Rose, can you hear me okay?
Hello.
Hi, Rosie, did you want to go into the breakout rooms?
I don't need to, I'm just writing up a report for this meeting. I can do if you want me to though.
We don't need you to, just check in, that's all, no worries.
No, I'm just writing a report.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, is Huda there? Or any council officers?
I don't think so, Hannah.
Luke, is that, is that Rosie?
It's Rosie, hiya.
Yeah, you. Good. Can I just leave you with a message?
Yes.
Well, thank you. So as the workshops got merged, we had to facilitate, not facilitators, note takers in our room, and Alex Bunting being the other one. So politely, I'm looking to duck out Alex this day and is that okay?
Yep.
Marvelous. Thank you so much. Marvelous. Thank you so much. Bye guys. Bye guys.
Hi everybody. It's Cass. Are all the breakout rooms finished now? They're everybody back. So thank you. I just want to thank everybody for taking part in those breakout rooms. We had a really good session in ours and we covered children's and young people and also health as well. And the two are so intertwined and I think health, health certainly goes across the piece. In terms of all the other groups, all the other breakout workshops that happened this evening. So what we'd like to do is now just get some feedback from each of the groups. And we've had three, but tried to cover six topics. So I don't know who wants to go first. Should we do ours first, Anne?
Yeah, yeah, not a problem.
Okay, do you want to say anything first?
Yeah, I mean, I think Mary used to say it in our group that communication was a big theme throughout both of our topics, both health and wellbeing and children and young people. And that the communication needs to be done in a variety of ways. You know, parks are as an example that Polly brought into the discussion. And also some other ways of communicating effectively through, you know, maybe a community site on our local schools website that gets to all of the parents and families who are at that school. So those are just a few examples of how we can improve communication. A local newsletter, again, there was somebody, Polly, I think, again, talking about doing a pilot in Arbuthnot. And if that works well, that could then perhaps be brought into the lack area, which would be a great idea. So yeah, a lot of, a lot of discussion about how we can improve from all of the services and all of our partners who are in, who are in the lack area, both with health and wellbeing and children and young people. People saying that they didn't think the council had a lot of input into health as such. But actually, you know, we do sit on the boards of the CCG and the Health and Wellbeing Board. So we can communicate what people have fed back tonight. And it was a really healthy, no pun intended, discussion where health and wellbeing was, was concerned. Our three areas that we thought were important were also some more work around mental health, particularly for both older and young people and how that's affected people throughout the COVID couple of years and how and what and how can we access resources to skill up some of our volunteers that are working with young people in narrow and how can we signpost some of our families to those sort of services as well. So that was one of our, one of our areas. I think you're going to cover the others, Mary, because they all sort of overlapped in many respects.
It did overlap and I think when we talked about health, we talked, we focused a lot on young children as well. But it was about, about, about services, about health services and how we can communicate with them, how the council can communicate with them to improve things where there are specific problems. But we covered food poverty, which we know is a big problem. And in particular, we've got a programme called the Healthy Holidays Programme where we can help to tackle that. And but it was, it was the main, one of the main themes was how we network and how we communicate. So we communicate obviously through newsletters, various networks. But we need also to get together and share good practice and develop these, these networks of people and organisations where they can share what they're doing. And also, you know, communities can understand what's going on in their area better. Because I think the thoughts was, the idea is that maybe that most, there's a lot of residents, a lot of young people really don't know what's going on in an area, even when there is quite a bit going on. So yeah, the top of the list was communication in all its, all its various forms and getting that out to, to, to the communities. So but working across the piece. And also, I think, one of the main things that also came across is whatever we do, whatever activities we were introducing or we're in, we're delivering, we should make those fun. Fun was a big theme that is missing from, from life at the moment. And we need to try and make those, those activities fun. So fun and communication and make communication two-way, if you like. And there's various activities and schemes and projects, including the new youth strategy that will help to do that. So that's how we'll be feeding back into it when we come to develop our plan. So that's children and young people and health. Diane, do you want some feedback on yours?
Yeah, will do. I made a fundamental error and I will say that upfront. I let Ben lead with crime and community safety. So we had an extremely good discussion on crime and community safety and raised a number of, a number of issues. You know, there were some concerns that some communities had some, thankfully, we knew quite a lot about them. So it proved we were in, in touch with the communities and what was going on. Even better, our local policing team knew about them as well. So, you know, that, that was a result. But one of our, one of the big things that came out of there, Shaun had setting a WhatsApp group for contributors to, to come together around one of the issues. And from, you know, my past, I've, I've given Shaun another link to follow up with licensing around the issue of antisocial use of fireworks. We also talked about communication lots of, unsurprisingly. And we talked about flytipping, reporting, the, the reporting of antisocial use of off-road bikes and the traumatic effects of burglary. Very broad themes. And Alison spoke about using the Facebook to report for the off-road bike team and for some other issues into, into South Yorkshire Police. Because we're really lucky with the connections we've got into the off-road bike team. And I spoke about the magic number, the 01142734567, council switchboard number to report any kinds of, and you know, the, the flytipping and, and littering. So communication was one of our themes. The other, the other thing when we, when we got talking about communities was the idea of how our community centres were so important for us to get out meeting again so that we could open our communities up again after COVID, improve our mental health, start socialising, start getting back to something like normal. And, and Paul came in with a, an absolutely brilliant suggestion that the reason why some of the community centres haven't been opened is because of the costs of, of deep cleaning between customers when they're not sole use. And he knew of a treatment that was being applied to some of them now. And the programme that, that there was a programme that existed for their, for their use. So I'm going to follow that up. And I think also the meeting has acted as a catalyst and we've put some people in touch with each other. So that is, that is one of the good things in that our neighbourhood watch has got, in Sheffield 12 has got a little bit more publicised. And their links of, of their names of the people that are, are out there have, have been publicised. I'm certainly going to talk to Kay after this about giving some wider publicity to the neighbourhood watch in association with, with Amy. So over to, over to Mary. I'm sure that's more, far more than three points, but we had a lot of discussions.
You're on mute, Mary.
All right, Zahira.
Thank you, Mary. We had the environmental group. It was burged with transport, but we had issues getting people from transport coming into our group. But anyway, we had a discussion around environment. We talked about education and how education is key. We talked about making use of the Amy Education Officer in our communities. We had a discussion around local residents and involving and engaging with local residents and how that is really important if we want to combat environmental issues. I talked about the Donald Environmental Forum, which is led by local people in communities and how that's working. We talked about getting local people more involved and proud of their areas. So, you know, getting, getting people involved in local campaigns. We will be launching the Love Donald, Love Where You Live campaign soon. And again, that's led by local people, young people from our area and the importance of getting people to be part of our campaign to look after their own neighbourhoods. So we, we kind of had a discussion around that. We also talked about parks and making parks safer. Somebody mentioned installing barriers to keep quad bikes and things like that out. We also talked about how we need to allow access for people on wheelchairs, for example. So that's, we need a bit more discussion around that. As far as transport is concerned, we felt that we needed another session around that. We, we kind of had a little bit of a discussion around the park and ride in the area and the traffic calming measures that are coming in. But there's quite a lot happening around transport in, in, in our area. And perhaps that's a separate session that we, we do need to do again to talk about in, in a bit more detail. But also something that we can make local people aware of what's happening in the area as far as transport is concerned. Okay. And that's about it, Mary. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, so we've got, we, one of the themes that seems to rush through all of this is communication, whether, you know, you're talking to people about cleaner streets and safer parks and communicating about, you know, love where you live, that kind of thing, to all the things that are going on in our areas. But that means getting together. So there's some seems, some, some indication here about forming kind of forum, forums, organisations, meetings, some, some, some place where we can all get together and meet and share stuff. That seems to be coming out as a, as a theme and the, and written communication as well, whether it's from the other services or just between each other and the local community. So we'll try and get that into some kind of order and feed that back and come up with our plan based on some of those themes for the next, for the next session, which is in March. Is that okay at the moment? Is everybody happy with that approach? Okay, so I'm going to move on now to the next bit, which is public questions. And that this public questions is part of every, all the lack public meetings. We've not had any written questions been submitted. So unless we've got somebody who wants to put their hand up now and ask a public question about any issue. So I've got Polly there and then Erica. Polly?
Hi, I just wanted to say, I've already said to the group I was workshopping with, but I'm running a pilot outreach project in Park and Arbuthnot to create a local newspaper, which would be written by, for and about the community. And that would provide a way for you to do community cohesion and communication. I am desperate for help with this project though, because I'm going to really struggle to do it myself in, in the hours I've got. So any, I'm just, I'm just sort of asking you all to get in touch with me. If you want communication in the area to improve, I need help to make this pilot project work. That's me out. Thank you very much for letting me say that.
Okay, thank you. As I said, we've got a newsletter that goes out in Donald every three months. And if any, we can put you in, in touch with the people that produce that, which is all our community groups getting together to produce that newsletter. Okay, and we can tell how it's done and how much it costs. Erica?
Just a point of information really. The website address that Hooda you shared with us, has that got informational it's about the discretionary powers that they lack currently has and its budgets and things like that? Because we've not been very specific about, about some of those things this evening. And is that where I would go and find that information, please?
Yeah. You answered that, yeah?
Yeah, I can answer that. Yeah, if you go on the Sheffield City Council website and you type in local area committees, there will be more information about generally the seven areas and also the powers.
Okay, thank you. So I've got now Kay Hamilton, then Irene Day and then Shaun Ed. And I think I saw Kinders hand up as well. So Kay.
Hello, sorry, Hooda, can I just ask please? In your presentation, it said that there was a paper consultation for everyone about the lack. I live in the area and never received one. I just wondered how that was done and whether some areas or people didn't receive them.
So we had two methods of consultation. There was the online consultation, which we asked people to fill in using Citizen Space. And the paper consultation, what we did was we commissioned some of the voluntary community face sets to do the consultation on our behalf. And also we, we also commissioned the Quality Partnership Group to do that consultation. So like I said in my presentation, you know, we obviously didn't reach everybody that we wanted. And it's something that we need to do and we need to do constantly. So it's, it's one of our kind of actions for us is how do we do more consultation? How do we get more views from wider residents? So it's something if you believe is, if you contact us, I can, I can speak to you separately.
Yeah, that's fine. Sorry, it wasn't a criticism of your whole consultation. It was more about me feeling that, did I miss something that it would have been helpful to have put my views into?
Yeah.
And if I missed it, did other people in my area miss it?
Yeah, I mean, because, because I said earlier that the whole, the response was altogether, the online and paper was 1,337, which is actually, it's not bad for us as a local area committee because others have got lower numbers, but actually it's not, it's not good and we need to do more. And, and, and that's the reason I left. You know, if you want to contact us separately, you want to have a conversation.
Yeah, sure, that's fine.
Please do so or email me. I'm, I'm happy to have that conversation and I'm happy.
No problem. Thank you for your response and that is very helpful. Thank you.
Mary, you're still on mute?
Yeah, Irene, sorry.
Yeah, it's just a quick question. There's a house in the park that stood empty. And it's been, the actual park lodge, which used to be a caretaker's house, it's been empty for over a year. And just before Christmas, it was vandalised twice, so it's had to be boarded up. And we were told. And we were told at the time that the estates section of the council, we're looking at all the buildings in the city. And I also understand that there's a similar house at Hollins End Park. And there's a council house not far from where I live down on the Castleback Road. And I'm just wondering, is there a reason that all these houses, you know, is this estates thing still going on? I mean, I know COVID slowed things down, but I just wondered what was happening.
Okay, so it's that Richmond Park you're talking about, Irene?
Yes, it is, sorry.
Richmond Park and Hollins End Park. Well, I don't know offhand what's happening with those, those buildings, but we can certainly find out and let you have that information. There has been, we have been looking at our estates, you know, all the buildings that we have in, in our estates across the city. I don't know if Terry wants to say anything about that, Terry? Because I know you were leading on it for a while.
Yeah, well, we, we've, we've now got ourselves a corporate mass asset management plan, which really means nothing to anybody else, really, does it? Except internally to the council. We're going through our property assortments. We're also on how we are opening up. We got to a standard of a number of buildings that were already opened up. But then we kind of, Omicon came along and kind of put a page to that. We are in a process, we are having a COVID goal, I think, I forget, we had somebody from Public Health on. Sorry, I forgot, forgot who was on. We had somebody from Public Health on in our group today. We are having a goal meeting of how we open all our community buildings and also how we start getting back at and repairing those buildings as well that require it. Irene, so you will see certainly through February now, how we start opening back up for the communities as well.
Yeah, it's not, it's not actually a community building. The pavilion was open some time ago. It's, it's a residential property.
The park.
In the park.
Oh, sorry, I don't, sorry, I don't know then, sorry, Irene.
And it's the same at Hollins End. And there's a house, an ordinary council house that's boarded up down on Castleback Road. And they've all been empty for a considerable length of time, which means you're losing rent.
Okay.
So I just wondered, that's all. I don't expect you to answer it tonight. I just thought I'd ask the question.
We haven't got the answer tonight, but we can find out about the two buildings in the park, in those, both, both those parks. If it's a council house on Castlebeck, it might be empty for, and, and for all sorts of reasons. But we'll certainly find out as much as we can for you. I'm going to bring Kinder in and then Shaun Ed last, if that's okay.
Mine's just a quickie. It's all gone quiet regarding the cycle track that was going to be the cycle lanes that were going to be put in Attic Cliff Road and the red line system. We've been talking to local businesses and so many of them are concerned, obviously, loss of business, particularly crossing red lines. And it's already traffic prior to when the review was done and the traffic flow, it was quiet. Now that things are fully actioned, the queues outside my house on Attic Cliff Road are an absolute disaster zone. So to put a cycle track on this now, we've not heard, do we know when updates or when, what is happening? Has it been agreed, not agreed, or how do I find out?
Well, I don't know the answer to that one. I don't know if anybody else does, who's a councillor. But we will take that one back and find out what's happening, Kinder.
Mary, do you want me, do you want me to answer it?
Oh, Matt, yeah, you can do.
Yeah, okay, hi, Kinder. The, the business case for that is currently sat with Sheffield City Region. So we're waiting, so the mayor, command authority, so we're waiting for approval to move to the next stage. That next stage will be the formal consultation process and the design work will go into kind of how we could fit that all along Attic Cliff itself. I think one thing which I will say is that just don't take this in isolation on Attic Cliff Road, because there's lots of stuff going on at the moment. There's Junction 33 works on the Parkway, which is shifting a load of traffic onto that road. So that's not a normal business as usual case scenario. Because we know what's happening on those roadworks, it blocks up and then people find other alternative routes. The other point is that when that works finished, there's a lot more capacity bill on A630, which means that a lot of the traffic which previously did route along Attic Cliff then shifts back onto the Parkway. The other bit about that is how we're actually going to work with the businesses to enhance the environment and the feel of Attic Cliff Centre. It's an important community, it's a very, very well established one. So as part of that work, we're looking to provide sort of the material enhancements, the footpaths, which would then obviously support some of the businesses around there and make it a nicer place to kind of spend some time and do business and everything else. And then the other bit is, is how we can actually make the area feel nicer, how we do control the types of traffic. And one thing which we're exploring through that programme is, is, is there, is a different route for HGV traffic, which I think is incredibly important for that area, not just because of the environmental impacts related to air quality, but also noise severance and everything else which comes with it. So they're, they're all key aspects we're looking to put forward. And I think on balance, we're trying to find a balanced solution. The cycle paths on that are, well, the alternative is to use a canal path, which we know is not suitable for many periods of time. This is the way in which we'll look to create that connectivity across Sheffield and Rotherham and Woodsmeadow Hall. If you want a separate chat about this, Kinder, just drop me a line.
I will do. The, the canal was definitely the route. We, we walked it, we're speaking to them at the moment about saying, saying about the reason they're not doing it is for the lighting. So that would be one of the things down.
It's also a permitted right of way, so it's not actually our, our.
Yeah.
Our ownership, so, yeah.
Okay, so answer your question, Kinder. Great, Shaun Ed.
So it was just, I would have put it in chat, but it's disabled. It was just to Polly to ask her, has she spoken to the people at the Burn Grieve Messenger who do a similar magazine? Because that would be very helpful if you haven't.
I am the project manager of the Burn Grieve Messenger. I'm the project manager of the.
I might have guessed, that's why Colin's laughing at me, in, in which case, good luck. And anything we can do from manner side, just ask.
Wonderful. Is there some way that I can get you all my email address? I mean, if you just go on the Burn Grieve Messenger website, you can get in touch with me. But I think it's really important to spread this model across Sheffield. We need to take back control of our local media. So, yeah, solidarity, everyone, and get in touch. Thank you. Okay, thank you. I can't see any more hands up in terms of public questions. So we will be finishing there. Thank you, everybody, for coming and taking part. It's been a really good turnout and we've had some good, really good discussions across every workshop, by the sounds of it. And it's nice to see familiar faces. And I hope everybody here tonight will come to the next meeting in March and see what, how we can, we've turned this into a plan. We've got, as I say, we've got £100,000, which is, sounds like a lot of money, but it isn't a lot of money. And we want to make that stretch and make the most of that money as much as we can do. The date of the next meeting is, Hudda?
On the 23rd of March and from six o'clock to eight o'clock. And it's going to be at Park Academy Secondary School.
Okay, so that will be, again, public meeting, formal public meeting. We'll make the decision to sign up the plan at that meeting formally. And there will be maybe other, I don't, I'm not sure else will be on, on the agenda, but we'll certainly have public questions on the agenda on that day. Okay, so thanks, everybody, for attending tonight. Thank you very much. And thanks to all the councillors and the, and the officers that have turned out in force to help us along tonight. It's really appreciated, so thank you.